I'd like to call the Monday, June 3rd, 2024 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And thank you, and may I have a report on the minutes of our May 6 regular session, work session, and executive session, our May 13 executive session, and May 29 executive session? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Your Honor. Upon review, I've found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Under status reports, we have no status reports tonight, and so we will go to visitors. Now, I see we have a couple of members of the press here, and we also have one visitor, but I believe you're here for the public hearing regarding the flag ordinance. So with no other visitors here in attendance, we will skip to that, and we will go then straight to legislation. And Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance to prohibit the adult-use cannabis operators from operating within the city of Oakwood. I turn it over to you, Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes, Your Honor. As mentioned, this is an ordinance prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators as defined by Section 3780.01 of the Ohio Revised Code from operating within the city of Oakwood, Ohio, and declaring this an emergency. At our November 7, 2023 election, Ohio voters passed State Issue 2, which effectively legalizes recreational marijuana. The new law took effect on December 7, and we expect that the state will begin issuing business licenses in mid to late summer. In January, council adopted a temporary moratorium on the issuance or processing of any permits relating to commercial cannabis operation to allow time for the state's new division of cannabis control to roll out standards, rules, and regulations for these businesses. We were also hopeful that the state legislature might act to modify or amend some provisions of this voter-initiated law, possibly in a way that could be beneficial to our community. To date, this has not happened, and we are not optimistic that it will. The legalization of marijuana is a major change in the law, particularly when it comes to the potential impact of marijuana business operations on a small residential community. It is important for council to carefully consider appropriate regulations to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as the community character we value in Oakwood. Council takes no position on the adult use of possession or possession of marijuana, which is legal under the state's law. However, council believes that marijuana business operations are not compatible with the dense residential character of Oakwood, and we are authorized by state law and by the city's own home rule authority to prohibit these kind of businesses from operating in Oakwood. Again, this ordinance only affects what state law refers to as adult-use cannabis operators, meaning businesses that cultivate, process, or sell marijuana. The ordinance has no effect on adult marijuana use and possession, including limited home growing, all of which are now legal as provided by the state law. I am introducing this ordinance as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect before the issuance of state licenses for adult-use cannabis operators. So I make the motion that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington?
Vice Mayor, will it affect medical marijuana use?
It will not. This is only for operators, adult-use operator sales, basically, for recreational.
Mayor, if I could just weigh in on that question?
Yes, please.
We do have a separate section in our ordinances that already prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries in Oakwood. That's a zoning regulation that we've had in place since roughly 2017 or 18, when medical marijuana was approved in Ohio. This ordinance doesn't affect that at all because medical marijuana is addressed under a completely different state statute than the new adult-use recreational marijuana.
So you can use medical marijuana, you just can't sell it in the city of Oakwood?
Correct. We just don't have dispensaries here as a land use that's authorized in the city of Oakwood, but there's no law against using it if you've got a medical operator, that sort of thing. Or now, the adult-use recreational can also be used and possessed in accordance with state law.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. I think Vice Mayor Byington also has another ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor. This is an ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 12, the signs ordinance of the Oakwood zoning ordinance, so as to clarify the regulatory exemption for certain flags and to specify a method for calculating the sign face area of temporary signs installed as lawn signs. This is the third reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code. It was introduced with a first reading at our April meeting, and its second reading in a public hearing at our May meeting. Initial proposed changes were reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on March 6. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval by council. Council conducted a public hearing at its May 6 meeting, but there was some concern about the size of flags that would be exempt from regulation. Specifically, there may be situations where property might want to display a flag larger than what is permitted under the ordinance, which currently limits maximum sizes to 60 square feet. To address this concern, the law director suggested that a provision could be added to provide for Planning Commission review and approval of a larger flag as special use, as long as it meets the special use standards for neighborhood compatibility. Council opted to table the ordinance and adopted a motion directing the law director to clarify the draft ordinance by adding a special uses provision. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing on this clarification and then proceed to a vote. So, Mayor, Your Honor, if you'd do a public meeting?
Thank you. Again, having a public hearing to involve text amendments to the Oakwood zoning code, the Planning Commission's already conducted a public hearing and has recommended approval of the ordinance in the original form, but again, since we asked the law director to clarify the proposed ordinance by adding a provision to allow for special approval of larger-sized flags. So again, similar to what we did last month, the procedure for the public hearing will be our usual format. We'll start with a city staff report summarizing the application in tonight's hearing. Since these are code updates, the staff report will be presented by our law director, Rob Jacks. After the staff report, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting and take public testimony, and we will start with anyone who wishes to support the text amendments, and then we'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak against them. Since we only have one guest, I think we won't have... You're either going to be for it or against it. Okay. When that testimony has concluded, we'll close the hearing and begin our council deliberations. Following our deliberations, we'll introduce and vote on the legislation to adopt our decision. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to council member, or not council member, law director, to swear in those who wish to testify, and I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Want to testify, sir? Okay. You swear for yourself, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and you testify, for example? Can I?
Thank you. Okay. So I'll open the public hearing, but I believe you want to give a staff report before I ask for citizen input.
Duncan, members of council? Thank you for having me down to speak about this tonight. I won't revisit every aspect of the ordinance since we did a public hearing last month. I don't think there were any questions at all about the temporary sign aspects of this, the yards and regulations. What I'm going to focus on tonight are just the flag exemption. As you remember, the purpose of this amendment was to clarify the exemption that we give. We currently don't regulate what the code calls governmental flags, and the move with this code amendment is to get away from classifying the exempt flags as governmental flags, because that's a content-based restriction. In other words, if it's a governmental flag, it's exempt, but if it has some other kind of content, it wouldn't be exempt. And when you start parsing among different types of content and saying, certain kinds of expression are allowed, other kinds of expression are not allowed, you run into First Amendment constraints. So the code amendment was to inject what we call content neutrality with the regulations, to regulate the time, the place, the manner, the size, the physical characteristics of the flag without getting into the content of the flag. What I presented last month was an amendment that would allow you to have up to two flags, and we specified some dimensions that you could have without being subject to regulation. You could have a total of 60 square feet of signage, no one flag being more than 30 square feet and six feet long on the longest dimension. What's before you tonight still retains that if it's not mounted on a flagpole. It still retains those dimensions that we talked about last month. If it's on a flagpole, you could have the 60 square feet, and if you chose to display just a single flag, that one flag could be 60 square feet in area, which would be as large as perhaps 6 by 10. I mean, you could play with the numbers to what multiplies out to 60, but that would be a rough guideline of what you could have on a flagpole. And our current code allows you to have up to a 35-foot flagpole and up to that 60-square-foot flag on the flagpole. What's been built into the ordinance tonight, though, is an additional provision that allows for someone who wants a flag larger than that, larger than 60 square feet, or on a pole that might be taller than 35 feet, they could apply for what's called special use permit approval that would come before the Planning Commission. It would be subject to the special use decision standards, which are really what I call neighborhood compatibility standards. They look at how that will fit in the proposed neighborhood. Do you have a large enough yard to support that? Is this going to be something that's looming over your neighbors' homes and causing, you know, some sort of unsightly spectacle in the neighborhood, or does it fit in the type of neighborhood that you live in? If you live where I live, you know, in a little one-sixth of an acre lot, having a 40 or 50-foot flagpole would probably look silly and be a potential danger to my neighbors. But if you lived over, say, in a larger estate property on Ridgeway, you might have plenty of space to put up a flagpole like that, and would qualify for special use approval. So that's what the additional provision does. It allows for that special use to be available in any residential zoning district, anyone who wants to have it. Again, the regulations are not aimed at any particular kind of content on the flag, so this would apply to any sort of flag that someone wants to fly. But staff would recommend adoption for the reasons that we discussed last month, and I would take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for our law director? All right. Thank you for your report. I'll now ask for people that are interested in favor... Well, I guess I'll ask our guests to come and speak, whether you're in favor or not. That'd be interesting. Yeah. Oh, yeah. You need to come up to the podium, so people at home can hear you, and I know you announced your name and address at our last meeting, but if you could do it again for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is David Suits. I live on 291 West Thruston Boulevard. It's down towards the end there. It's one of the larger lots that's out that way. I'm grateful for the special use permit consideration in terms of the amendment here to the zoning regulation here, the ordinance that's being considered. My only comment is this, and I understand that this is about being neutral in terms of content with free speech, and bear with me here now, because, you know, I'm going back to my childhood and the pride of the American flag, and I'm kind of like puzzled here about why we need to feel, or why we feel the need to regulate the American flag and the size and all. I know we're trying to be fair. I know we're trying to avoid, you know, being unfairly discriminatory here against maybe some other forms of communication, but, golly, it's the American flag. Just, you know, there's the rational analysis here, and then there's the gut check, okay? And I'm having a hard time with the gut check on all this, and trying to see the rational relationship between a zoning regulation and the American flag, okay? So I'm grateful for the exemption and the application of that. I'm just asking everybody here to consider that, you know, this is, while it's a governmental flag, it's the United States of America, there's a lot of understandable pride for the country, and I think it's in a different position or footing than maybe some of the other forms of communication. Maybe that's unfair discrimination, but I ask people to do gut checks here on when they're doing that, because I look around here over Memorial Day, and I look around Oakwood, and, golly, there's an awful lot of pride in displaying the flag, which is great. I'm glad to see that. I hope that that continues. So, you know, in terms of considering the special use permits or the enforcement, I'd like some, you know, consideration there. Again, it's our country. We ought to take some pride in it. I certainly do. The house that I live in is the old Grant Estate, okay? And I don't know if people are familiar with that house or not. You asked, Mr. Jack, about how tall that flagpole is. I think it's about 35 feet, okay? It's a big one, okay? It's been in there for a long time, certainly before I owned the property in there for a while. My recollection, because this is my second ownership of a home in Oakwood, is that back in the 90s, there was an Ohio flag that flew right below the American flag off of that pole of the previous owner's. That's just a vague recollection, but, long story short, this is a flagpole that's right across from the country club, gets a lot of visibility. I'm not crowding a neighbor. I've got an 8-by-12 flag on the pole, okay? Just letting everybody know, I don't think that that's oversized. You know, I think it sends the right message to be proud of the United States, and I'm speaking to you right before Flag Day, I might add, on the Fourth of July, so this is going to continue on for at least a few more weeks, if not a little further beyond that. But my only comment is, please give that some consideration here. I'm not going to be hateful about it, but, golly, it's our country's flag, you know? So, thanks for putting some extra special consideration into exemptions for that. That's really my only comment that I've got. I'll be flying my flag proudly. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Suits, for coming, and we are going to drive by your home and look at it. Since we have no one else that wishes to address council on this, I'll close the public hearing and then ask our city council if they begin our deliberations, and before I do that, I'd like Vice Mayor Byington to make his motion.
Yes, Your Honor. Since this is the third reading of this ordinance, I will move that council adopt it this evening.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Anyone want to open up our deliberations as to what we think about this?
I have a question for Mr. Jacks. You know, with the special use permit, obviously that comes into play on anything over the 60 square feet. Content can be a part of that application as well when it gets approved, correct? And I understand our position on trying to be very open with content, but I've actually thought about the comments made by Mr. Suits before as well, that, you know, I'm in a tough spot in the fact that I'd like to never have an exemption for our American flag. However, I do understand the example of you and me putting a flagpole in my front yard, making it an 8-by-12, and that just isn't going to work.
Right.
I mean, I get that. I mean, that would be knocking against my two front trees that Carol loves so much, you know? I mean, I understand that issue there, but at the same time, I do not like the idea of restricting our American flag. So I didn't know if, when you go for a special use application, is it just based on measurements, or is content ever part of that?
It would almost have to be based on measurements alone and not on content. You're still talking about governmental action, and this is where I'm as sympathetic as anybody to... I'm a patriotic guy. I love the American flag. I got a son who's an Eagle Scout. I bleed red, white, and blue like anyone does. But the challenge here is when you say one type of speech, and in particular, this is what the Supreme Court calls core political speech, when you get into issues of nationality and patriotism, that sort of thing, when you get into issues of one form of speech is okay, and we're going to allow it, and we're not going to regulate it at all, for example, you have to open that up to the other types of speech that are being done in a similar manner. In other words, if you're going to say you can fly an American flag unrestricted as to size, then you also have to say that's also going to apply when someone wants to fly, say, a Ukrainian flag, or Israeli flag, or something else that has some other political significance, some other kind of political speech. And so you either allow them all, or you prohibit them all. It's a similar issue to when we were dealing with the Christmas lights last year, the family that wanted to have the lighting display out into the sidewalk, and they said, you know, "Gosh, these are Christmas lights, and everybody loves Christmas lights. It adds to the ambiance of the community. We want to encourage this." And on the one hand, I understand that. I thought they had a nice display, but as soon as you allow one display in the public right of way like that, you have to start allowing other people to display things in the right of way that may not feel as warm and fuzzy, and we may wish we hadn't done that.
Legally, we cannot simply allow American flags.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Other deliberations that council needs to hear? Was that me? Did I do something incorrect?
I don't think that would do.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone else wish to opine on this before we call the vote? From Turbin? No? Vice Mayor Byington?
No, sir.
All right. My only comment would be, I would like American flags as well as anybody, but the Orbit flag hanging there off I-75 that, you know, is about 3,000 square yards is too big to put in a home in Oakwood, so... But I'm sure that Mr. Suits's flag is going to be perfectly fine. So with that, I'll... It has been... Motion's been made and seconded, and so I guess at this point, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, and you have one more ordinance, Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, Your Honor. This is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2024 Original Appropriation Ordinance 4985 and any existing supplements thereto to provide for the appropriation of, number one, an additional amount of $450,000 to be expended from the Capital Improvement Fund for additional costs for concrete road repairs on Raleigh, Woodstock, Deveraux, and Ashridge; and, two, an amount of $450,000 to be transferred from the General Fund to the Capital Improvements Fund. This is for the city of Oakwood, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. This is the first reading of a supplemental appropriation ordinance that will allow the city to perform additional concrete street work in two areas. First, competitively bid prices for concrete street repairs were received through the 2024 Sidewalk, Curb, and Driveway Apron Project. Work is underway and is progressing well, which provides an opportunity to schedule additional repairs under the 2024 pricing that would otherwise be planned for 2025. Supplemental funding would allow for repairs to be made to the entire length of Raleigh Road, Woodstock Drive, and Ashridge Road, and to the northern half of Deveraux Drive in one project year rather than portions of those roadways in multiple years, minimizing neighborhood's disruption. The second area is along Deveraux Drive, where the 2023 Far Hill Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project has been ongoing. Current plans call for the use of asphalt to restore pavement in the project area, which is the southern half of Deveraux Drive, but the city manager has recommended completing it with concrete. This is a deviation from the project plans, but would retain Deveraux's existing material and character consistent with other streets in the immediate surrounding neighborhood. The supplemental appropriation will authorize an additional amount of $450,000 to be expended from the Capital Improvement Fund and transfer of $450,000 from the city's general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund, which will be utilized to fund this additional project. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, as our rules require, because we're waiving our second meeting, requires a four-fifth votes of council, and Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation for this evening. We do have a staff report from our Leisure Services Department, and Carol Collins, who, for those of you that were at our last meeting, she is the longest-lived employee in the city of Oakwood. She's been with us for 49.8 years. I can't remember, 49.9? It's getting close, correct?
Getting close.
Okay. So, welcome, Carol.
Thank you very much. Well, it's a pleasure to be here, Mayor Duncan, and members of Oakwood City Council. I just thought I would give you an update as far as what's going on in the Leisure Services Department. I thought I would start off with the pool, since it's the pool season. As you can see, we have surpassed memberships from 2023 and 2022, and even earlier than that. We have 500 family memberships right now, 62 single memberships, and 117 senior memberships. And that was as of last Friday, and I know as of today, there were more, but this was updated last Friday. So we're very happy with the memberships that we have right now. We have summer fun at the pool. We have family fun nights planned, and one of them is on June 23, one on Sunday, July 21, and one on Sunday, August 11. And the pool will be open until 9:00 on those evenings for family fun, and it's always a very popular event, and we encourage our members to go and participate in these activities. Today was the first day for the swim team. We have over 181 swimmers, and the registration deadline was on Sunday. We started today, and I think that there's a few more that will probably register yet this week, but we look forward to having a great dolphin swim team this year, just like we have in the past, I think. It, again, is a very popular event and has a lot of young children that participate in this program. And registration began today for certified swim lessons, and it goes from toddlers, and the parents are included with the toddlers' swim lessons, but then we go into Level 5 and Level 6, and it's all certified by the American Red Cross. And in addition to that, we have some adult water workouts. The deep water workout is Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, and then water aerobics is Tuesday and Thursday evenings. And this has been a very popular event for seniors as well as other adults that want to participate in this program. What's new at the pool? Well, the pool looks like we have a brand-new pool. We had a new liner installed for the entirety of the big pool as well as the baby pool at a cost of $107,000. We have received numerous compliments about the way the pool looks this year, and I agree. It looks like a brand-new pool, and we're looking forward to having it last for a number of years, and it is under warranty for approximately 10 years. Summer activities, camps, and activities. You can see all of the activities that we have for the youth of the community. We're very happy to have that. The other thing that is not in that is tennis lessons, and Five Seasons is doing their tennis lessons this year. And again, those are very, very popular, but you can see that we have sports activities and trivia and just theater camp, babysitting, just a whole host of activities for the children, as well as activities that Orchardly Park for the summer months that are free and open to the public. And as far as adult classes, we have classes for adults going from seniors all the way down, so you can see some of the activities that we have there. And Hollinger Tennis Center, as of Friday, we had 33 memberships and two summer memberships. We're responsible for collecting all... We're responsible, responsible for collecting all of the monetary donations and memberships for the club, and that's been very beneficial for the tennis club. So now we're going to go on to the horticulture part. Tree City USA, Ohio is the national leader in Tree City USA communities for this 42nd consecutive year. There's 237 participating cities, villages, and townships. I know Ohio is very, very proud of the fact that we are a Tree City USA throughout the state of Ohio. And as you can see, you know, $40 million has gone through and gone towards the urban forestry efforts within the state of Ohio. Oakwood was recognized for this 42nd year as a Tree City USA in April, and that was held in Tep-Tep City. And city manager was the one that was presented the awards that day. And again, we're very proud of our urban forestry program, as well as the state of Ohio's. And part of Tree City USA is the Johnny Appleseed Street Tree Planting Project, and to date, we have planted 3,323 trees for a total cost of over $482,000. This past year, we planted 63 trees, and you can see the varieties there, and that included a lot of native trees, as well as other trees that we planted. A care and maintenance brochure was sent out to all of the participants in the program, and I think it's a very beneficial program for the city, and one that's very well-liked. Along with Tree City USA is the Arbor Day Celebration, and the third graders from both Harmon and Smith Schools go on a treasure hunt. And this is a very popular program that the Beautification Committee undertakes every single year, and they go to this, each of the schools, and they, the children receive a brochure that has a number of different trees, identification of trees. They go out and look at the trees and are given all of the beneficial characteristics of the trees, as well as what the tree species are. And it's just a fun afternoon for the children. And they also learn about all of the beneficial insects, as well as others that are not so beneficial, such as the Emerald Ash Bore and the Asian Longhorned Beetle. But they're also shared about Tree City USA, and at the end, they are given seedling for them to go home and plant. And here are just a few pictures of both Harmon and Smith School. Katie Dalrymple, as well as Ted, Ted Kircher, were the ones that led the treasure hunt this year for the Oakwood Beautification Committee. This year, we have the preschool story hour at Schaefer Park, and you can see the dates, June the 28th, July the 26th, and August the 30th at 10:30 in the morning. We used to have them at Smith Gardens, but we kind of outgrew the space at Smith Gardens, so now we have them at Schaefer Park. And I would say, on an average, we probably have about 75 children and adults that participate in preschool story hour. And here you can just see, you know, a few of the pictures of the Four Seasons at Smith Gardens. This year, the Francis Smith Gardens Perennial Sale raised over $7,666 through the sale, which is, I think, a very popular program for the Francis Smith Gardens, and we're very proud of the fact that we raised over $7,000. That goes towards the maintenance and care of the gardens. Along with that, we had a garden workshop for the children, and that was the same day on Saturday morning, and we had about 25 children that participated in that program. The Oakwood Beautification Committee planted the island between Aberdeen and Telford, and these are just a few of the pictures of the people and members of the committee that planted there. We planted salvia, as well as begonias, and I think every time you go past, you can see how beautiful it is right now, as well as looking forward to all of the colors throughout the summer. Smith Gardens and blanket concerts. We have one this Sunday. It's Mad Cat Puppets, and it starts at seven o'clock. We hope that we have good weather for that. The next one would be Sunday, July the 14th, and that one is Honey in Houston. And then the last one that we have is a very special blanket concert. We have the Puzzle of Light, and we're celebrating the 50th year of the city receiving Smith Gardens. So we have a very special day planned for that, and we hope that we have a lot of people that participate in that. Something new for my department is the Beautification Awards. This was our first attempt in May, and we had 15 residential winners, as well as one business winner. And it, it's not only for beautification efforts, but it's for residential improvements, and we look at it from the street side. We don't go into the backyard of anybody's property, but it's what the property looks like. And we know that there's been a lot of improvements throughout the community within the last year. So the Beautification Committee is looking at all different avenues of cities, the residents' property. So we will be presenting the June and May awards in August, and then in July and August, we'll present that to council in September. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for our Director, Carol? How'd you make that thing turn into a crumpled-up piece of paper?
It's a secret.
Okay. You haven't been here long enough to know that secret.
All right. Very good.
Carol, how many trees do we have in Oakwood that the city maintains?
Um, I want to say there's over 8,000, or like 8,200 that we have in the computer that, that we maintain. And that does include some of the trees in our parks as well.
But it does not include a tree that I would have bought to put in my yard?
It would be part of Johnny Appleseed.
Okay.
But it's not part of the count that we have, that, of what we maintain.
Thank you. Other questions for Carol?
Just a quick one. Is there possible to have a treasure hunt for adults? I would love to do that. Yes.
I know. We'll consider that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Anybody else? All right.
Great job.
Thank you, as always. I agree.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Look forward to going to the Smith Gardens blanket concert.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, there are a number of different ways that we add trees into, into public rights of way in Oakwood, and one of which is what I mentioned in my newsletter to you last Friday, and that is trees that are dedicated by a person or a family or a group of people in honor of someone. And last Friday, we had a wonderful ceremony at the center median of Far Hills near Wiltshire for Dottie Pults. And I know a number of you knew Dottie, and really a remarkable lady. There's a beautiful little plaque there at the base of that tree that, you know, as that tree grows, we'll forever remember Dottie. I knew her from the Oakwood Rotary Club. PJ Janus, longtime Oakwood resident, gave a beautiful eulogy at that event. So we have a running list of all the trees that are dedicated in Oakwood and have them on our website, and so we'll be adding this one to that list as well. But I've said, you know, each time Carol gives a report, I've, I think I've commented on how it's a relatively small department, but it's a mighty department, and it's really remarkable how, how much we do under Carol's leadership. And it's just, I think, a perfect fit, the Oakwood Community Center, for the City of Oakwood, and has been for, for many decades. So thank you, Carol, for all you do. When Chief Hill told me shortly after he became the chief that he wanted to set up a citizen police academy, I, and, and it wouldn't cost very much, I said, I said, "Yes, let's do it." And I thought to myself, you know, this will probably happen two or three years, and then we won't have folks, you know, wanting to give up two and a half or so hours on a Wednesday evening from September to November, over a 10-week period, year after year after year. Well, I was wrong. And every year, we've had a wonderful program, and this week, information or a posting will go out announcing that we're accepting applications for the 2024 program. And I'm quite certain, based on history, that we will fill the 12 allotted slots very, very quickly. So I guess an announcement to the community, if you are interested in the program this year, you better sign up early. And next time the chief is here, he'll comment again on the program. It's a very, very, very well-run program. Thank you for approving the, the additional funds for the concrete street repair tonight. Work is already underway, as you know, on Raleigh Road. It began right about Ridgeway Road and is working its way westward on Raleigh. And with this extra money, now we can complete all of Raleigh, and can do Woodstock, Ashridge, and Deveraux. And that'll be a very nice improvement for that neighborhood of Oakwood. Very soon, a contractor will start the concrete repair work in the Far Hills Avenue Business District. It will be somewhat disruptive. There's no way to, easy way to do it, tearing out concrete, replacing it, and then, you know, giving, allowing a lot of cure time for it. But we'll be cognizant of the businesses there as we, we complete the work and look forward to, to that improvement. Happy to report that the Far Hills Storm Sewer Project is substantially completed now. All the pipe is in, all the catch spaces are in, all the manholes are in, you know, the entire infrastructure is there. What's left to do is site restoration. We are in the process of rebuilding the small circular island at For and Far Hills. You can see that coned off right now. That'll be done fairly quickly. And, and then lastly, the Far Hills resurfacing. And I've talked about this for two or three years now. We've been doing an awful lot of work in preparation for the milling off and complete resurfacing of the two miles of Far Hills Avenue in Oakwood, and that work is tentatively scheduled for the middle of June. So we're about two weeks away from what will be probably about a three-week construction process, and that'll culminate with a beautiful, brand-new asphalt roadway down 48 in Oakwood. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing done, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate our Oakwood High School graduates. They've worked hard. They now have diplomas, recognizing their achievement. And as a community, we've done our best to make them good ambassadors for our city, and so we are confident that they will always represent us well. Also, I want to say something that's directed to particularly elementary schoolchildren, parents, that I humbly ask their cooperation in ensuring that their children use any motorized or electric scooters responsibly and safety, safely. It's important to remember that our young riders may not fully be aware of our traffic rules, our speed restrictions, or the importance of wearing a helmet. So parents, please take the time to educate and supervise your children as they use the scooters, just as you did when it was time for them to learn to ride a bike. By working together, we'll have a safe summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate our Oakwood Rotary on another successful that day in May. It was a great event, a great community event. There was something for everybody there. And the best part is, is that the money that they earn all comes back to Dayton and to our community through donations to the nonprofits. So congratulations, Oakwood Rotary.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
No comments this evening.
Vice Mayor Byington?
No comments from me either.
Well, I have a comment.
I'm sure you do.
We knew you would.
Thursday marks the 80th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy during World War II. Over 156,000 U.S., British, and Canadian troops participated in the largest amphibious invasion in military history. The order of the day issued by General Dwight D. Eisenhower was as follows. Soldiers, sailors, and airmen of the Allied Expeditionary Force, you are about to embark upon a great crusade towards which we have striven these many months. The eyes of the world are upon you. The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere march with you. In company with our brave allies and brothers in arms on other fronts, you will bring about the destruction of the German war machine, the elimination of Nazi tyranny over oppressed peoples of Europe, and security for ourselves in the free world. Your task will not be an easy one. Your enemy is well-trained, well-equipped, and battle-hardened. He will fight savagely. But this, in this year, 1944. Much has happened since the Nazi triumphs of 1940 and 1941. The United Nations have inflicted upon the Germans great defeats in open battle, man to man. Our air offensive has seriously reduced their strength in the air and the capacity to wage war on the ground. Our home fronts have given us an overwhelming superiority in weapons and munitions of war, and placed at our disposal great reserves of trained fighting men. The tide has turned. The free men of the world are marching together to victory. I have full confidence in your courage, devotion to duty, and skill in battle. We will accept nothing less than full victory. Good luck, and let us beseech the blessing of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking. Over 4,400 Allied troops died on D-Day. Total Allied deaths in the Battle of Normandy, which lasted through August 1944, exceeded 226,000. In his book, The Guns at Last Light, author Rick Atkinson quotes a soldier, "No war is really over until the last veteran is dead." Over 16 million Americans were in uniform during the Second World War. He estimates the number of living World War II veterans was about 1 million 10 years ago, and today the number is less than 100,000. He concludes his book thusly, "Yet the war, and all the war contained, nobility, villainy, immeasurable sorrow, is certain to live on, even after the last old soldier has gone to his grave. May the earth lie lightly on his bones."
Our next meeting, July 15. We are adjourned.